Ladies and gentlemen, this is the April 16, 2014, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to start it with the Pledge of Allegiance. You're all invited to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part One, Item One, 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge; Item Two, 2012-04, Story Book Homes; Item Three, 2012-02, Carlson Associates; Item Four, 773 Scholar Estates; Item Five, 1139 Jenna Court; Item Six, 299 Archer Hells; Item Seven, 280A Olivia Estates; under Part Two, Item Eight, 2010-06, KVC Holdings; Item Nine, Case 911A Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on the items that were just read, which the Planning Department is requesting be adjourned? Seeing none, a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn items one through nine as read.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Ten, is an extension of performance bond estimate approval for Samantha Estates, number 1123. The applicant is requesting an extension of the performance bond estimate approval in order to be able to post the performance bond and file the map. The approval for the subdivision will expire on May 5, and the matter needs to be placed before a town board meeting agenda. The map of Samantha Estates, 1123, was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on May 5, 2010. The Board granted the applicant eight retroactive 90-day extensions of the final approval on April 3, 2013, that expired on May 5, 2013. On May 2, 2013, August 21, 2013, November 6, 2013, and February 26, 2014, the Board granted a total of five additional 90-day extensions of final approval that will expire on May 5, 2014, which is four years after the original approval. The applicant has indicated that they have obtained much of the required items, and only the mortgage lien releases are remaining. They have indicated that they are working with the town attorney's office to address the issues with obtaining the remaining items. The performance bond estimate of $161,685 for the subdivision was approved with this subdivision on May 5, 2010. However, the performance bond has not yet been accepted by the town board because the filing of the map has been delayed. The Planning Board's approval of this performance bond was valid for a period of two years and expired on May 5, 2012. The town attorney has indicated that in order for the town board to accept the performance bond, the Planning Board's approval of the amount must be up to date. The applicant submitted a request to extend the performance bond approval, and the request was distributed to all concerned departments for review. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have indicated they have no objection to the extension of the performance bond approval at the existing amount. The Planning Department has determined that the street trees and sidewalks are bonded at the current rate. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objection to extending the performance bond. The applicant has requested an extension until September 14, 2014, which would be an extension of two years, four months, and nine days. However, it has been the practice of the Planning Board to grant extensions of performance bond approval only in two-year terms. A two-year extension would bring the approval to May 5, 2014, the same day as the planning -- as the Board's conditional final approval is due to expire. As construction has not yet begun, the applicant will need additional extensions of the performance bond approval. Therefore, to avoid confusion and remain consistent with past practices, the Planning Department is recommending that the performance bond be extended for a period of two years, after which the applicant will need to request an additional two-year extension and pay the appropriate fees. The Planning Department offers the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond approval for the subdivision known as Samantha Estates, 1123, for a period of two years, to expire on May 5, 2014.
On this matter, is there anybody present on behalf of the applicant? Please come to the microphone, give your name, address, and your relationship to the applicant, please.
Steve D'Agostino, 40, Franciscan Lane, Smithtown, New York. I'm the owner of the property.
Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you heard the recommendation and the proposed resolution put forth by the Planning Department?
Yes.
Do you have any questions about it, or are you in agreement with it?
Yes.
Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Any question from anybody on the Board? No? Hearing none, a motion, please?
In the matter of Samantha Estates, number 1123, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously for zero. The resolution is adopted. Hand that in. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 11, is the waiver request for Winston's Run. The applicant has agreed to pay the money to the Street Tree Fund, so he stated he felt it wasn't necessary for him to appear tonight. You have the memo separately from your packet, and as a reminder, the Planning Department had offered the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Michael Weinrib doing business as Winston's Run at Wisconsin LLC to waive the requirement for the installation of 26 street trees in the subdivision known as Winston's Run, number 1092. However, in lieu of planting the required street trees, the Board would accept a payment of $1,750 to the Street Tree and Sidewalk Fund with an agreement from a town department to plant the street trees on Darrell Court.
The applicant is advised that he's not coming tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody in the --
I can see him right over there.
Oh.
Yeah.
You want to come up to the microphone? Name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Michael Weinrib, 6800 Jericho Turnpike, Sayos, New York.
Mr. Weinrib, have you just heard the proposed resolution put forth by the Planning Department?
Yes, I have.
Regarding this matter, you're in agreement with it?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this particular matter? Any questions from anybody on the Board? Seeing none, a motion, please?
In the matter of Winston's Run at Wisconsin, number 1092, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously for zero. The resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 12, is a zone change petition for KPE 2 in Kings Park. And as a reminder, attached to your memo, you have an area on some proposals as well. The reason for this report, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on April 16, 2014, to consider the above-referenced petition for a change of zone from LI Light Industrial to R10 Residential Single Family 10,000-square-foot Minimum Lot Size to permit the subject to be developed for residential units. I'm going to continue on page two where it says "Planning Consideration." The applicant is requesting a change of zone from LI Light Industrial to R21 Residential Single Family 21,780 square-foot Minimum Lot Size to permit the development of residential units at the site, a partially vacant, previously sand-mined industrial parcel. Proposed development will include the adjacent lot to the west that is already zoned, R21. This change of zone would permit development that would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan for this area. The subject site is zoned LI and is in the eastern 22-acre portion of a 25-acre site, the balance of which is zoned R21. The site was zoned for medium density, 11 units per acre residential use at the inception of zoning in 1932. In the period from 1932 to 1951, the permitted density of the residential zoning was decreased three times, and by 1957, the residential zoning in the area was, as it is today, permitting two units per acre, for example, R21. Additionally, in the late 1940s and early 1950s, several lots in this area were rezoned for light industrial use. Although this was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, presumably the intention was to provide additional zoning for taxable, non-nuance industrial uses in that -- in an area that at the time was remote from most settled residential neighborhoods. The site was rezoned to LI in 1949. The site had been sand-mined, and the northwestern section is vacant. The existing business is located on the southern and eastern portion of the site and deals in precast concrete products and includes storage and a welding yard. These uses are not in conformance with the LI zoning, but rather are heavy industry HI uses. The site is currently the subject of a restraining order to halt the illegal industrial activity at the site. There are significant changes engraved throughout the site. To the north is a vacant property zoned R21. Farther north is a closed sand and gravel operation. To the south, across Old Northport Road, and to the west, is residential development in R21 zoning. To the east are R21 and LI-zoned parcels, some of which are vacant and some of which are the sites of ongoing sand-mining operations and other industrial uses that appear not to be consistent with the zoning. Adjacent at the southeast is a recycling transfer station facility, USA Recycling. The Smithtown Municipal landfill is approximately one-half mile west on Old Northport Road. The site is in an area that was zoned for residential use at the inception of zoning. Subsequent rezonings to permit light industrial uses on several lots were done in contravention of the comprehensive plan. The petition would revert the zoning to conform to the comprehensive plan for this area, namely, single-family residential uses. The current uses do not comply even with their light industrial zoning, have encroached on adjoining lots, or paper streets, have been developed without site plan approval, and/or have been the subject to citations for violations of the zoning ordinance. This site was previously the subject of a zone change petition, number 2002-01, under the name Roseland Kings Park LLC, that was considered in conjunction with a similar petition for several of the properties to the east, petition 2004-8BNE. The petitions were considered together because of the potential for the industrial uses on each of the site to affect future residents of both, and the consequent need to coordinate development to ensure that residential uses and industrial uses be separated and buffered, and that the design of the sites provide for all necessary infrastructure to serve on both sites. Moreover, the design would have been predicated on the assumption that most, if not all, of the industrial uses on both sites would cease operation. The town board adopted a seek-or-positive declaration for both petitions, and sometime later, both petitions were withdrawn without completion of the required environmental impact statement. This petition has been submitted without there being a corresponding petition for the adjacent 40-plus-acre site. Because there is a serious concern about the development of new housing adjacent to the existing industrial uses, especially those that are out of compliance with the zoning requirements, it will be important to consider how buffers and other protections may be used to ensure adequate protections for the residents of the housing proposed in this petition. The town has previously approved a subdivision south and west of the site, and has required that 200- and 300-foot buffers be constructed and maintained to protect those residents from the potentially obnoxious industrial uses on this and adjacent sites. These buffers, unfortunately, have not proved to be adequate based on the residential complaints received from residents of those subdivisions. Therefore, the Board must consider more demanding methods to provide adequate protection for future residents. The proposed development, because the topological and environmental conditions of the site, is an appropriate situation for the use of clustering, which is a design technique that can be used to the discretion of the Board. Clustering allows units to be placed in one or more groups on the development site in which each lot is on a lot smaller than is required in the zoning district to preserve more of the total site for uses such as open space, recreation, site amenities, or buffers. The total number of units on the site cannot exceed the permitted yield in the given zoning district. To design a cluster development, the first step is to lay out the design as it would be permitted in the absence of any cluster and in full compliance with all setbacks and other dimensional requirements. The total number of units permitted under this full-compliance design is the yield. The subsequent cluster design may not exceed this number of units, although the final yield may be reduced depending on other design factors. Two clustering scenarios are possible in approaching a design and function of this development to minimize the impact of industrial operations on the adjacent properties and to avoid areas of environmentally sensitive lands. The first would be a cluster of single-family homes, where the individual homes are located on quarter-acre lots in a district requiring half-acre lots, with the balance of the property to be used for buffers, similar to the Country Estates complex at the intersection of Indianhead Road and Old Northport Roads, subdivision 888. The second would be a more intensive cluster of attached townhouse-style units with more land remaining available for amenities and buffers, such as was done at the Pine Wood Estates at the intersection of Jericho Turnpike and Kings Park Road in subdivision 707. There are advantages and disadvantages to each approach. Preliminary analysis of the site indicates that the yield on this property is approximately 37 units, although this is not an official determination of yield. If we were to use the clustered, single-family approach, the need to effectively separate the new homes from the uses on the adjacent site to the east may require a larger buffer than has been used in nearby subdivisions, and this may reduce the yield. If the townhouse cluster approach is used, and we assume the units have approximately 2,500 square feet, including garage, then the applicant can likely achieve a yield closer to that formally calculated for the site. Attached are conceptual plans that show how each approach might be realized. Both approaches have taken into account that there are topological and environmentally sensitive land issues, but do not reflect all the limiting factors that could affect final design criteria and yield. Both assume that there will be a minimum of regrading on the site and that there will be no prolonged or extensive sand mining. Alternate One shows a single-family home layout that clusters the homes on quarter-acre lots, but still does not provide an adequate buffer from the adjacent property. Note the line showing a 200-foot distance from the adjacent site. This demonstrates how, even in a single-family home cluster, yield may need to be reduced to accommodate the need for buffers. Alternate Two shows a clustered townhouse design. These designs are conceptual only, and neither is recommended as a final design. The Board should be aware that it is likely that a seek-or-positive declaration will be made -- will be recommended for this petition. That is, the preparation of an environmental impact statement, EIS, would be required. Although this rezoning may be desirable in that the housing proposed in this petition would be a significant decrease in the intensity of use on the site, and that it will encourage development and compliance with the comprehensive plan, it would be a significant changing character of the neighborhood. An EIS would consider the potential effects of that change. It would include recommendations on the details of the subdivision of the property, including determining appropriate layout, yield, regrading, and necessary drainage, roadways, and other infrastructure. It would also consider how the development of the site would need to be coordinated with adjacent sites. The Board should not entertain recommendations for action until the following issues are considered: A, what environmental concerns are on the site and how they will be mitigated; B, how to assure that roadways, other infrastructure, and coordinated access to adjacent sites are provided; and C, how the existing site conditions on this adjacent sites will affect the site design. Environmental Concerns. As noted above, in considering a previous petition for a change of zone on this site, the town board adopted a seek-or-positive declaration. That is, they required that a full environmental impact statement be prepared before the Board could make a decision on the zoning request. It is important for the Board to have a complete assessment of the environmental conditions before determining what uses are appropriate. These lots include sites that have been used for years for activities that have included excavation and other heavy industrial-type activity. The degree and kind of any subsurface condition, such as contamination, soil conditions, et cetera, are not fully known. In considering whether the sites are suitable for residential development, the Board should know all of the environmental conditions of the site, above and below ground, and what type of remediation activities will take place. This element should be quantified in specific detail. Coordinated Access. A coordinated road system is essential for good future development of the entire area and should consist of a series of interconnected collector roadways. There are properties to the north, the Raleigh property, and to the east, the Jiswali and Correa properties, that will most likely be developed in the future, and the development in the proposed subject petition must provide a roadway system that can be coordinated with that future development. At a minimum, Lawrence Road, Old Northport Road, and the Paper Street, Kings Park Road, an eventual access to Indianhead Road should be considered as necessary components. Site Design. The sand mining and other uses on the site have created steep slopes and other topographical issues that will affect layout of structures, roadways, and site amenities. This has also been the case on the adjacent property to the east. To ensure the development of good residential communities in this area, any potential clustering, regrading, buffers, and similar site design issues should take into account the possibility that the adjacent site could be either industrial or residential in the future and provide buffering as needed, but also permit coordination of roadways and drainage should the properties to the east later be developed with residential uses. The following response dated November 27, 2013, has been received from the Suffolk County Planning Department -- I'm sorry, Planning Commission. Pursuant to the requirements of Section A 1414 to 23 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, the above-referenced application is not within the jurisdiction of the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Recommendation. Given the importance of the environmental factors in this petition, the Board may want to request that the town board address the question of the seeker review as soon as possible, rather than waiting for a formal recommendation on the petition from the Planning Board. Therefore, the Planning Department offers the following resolution for consideration by the Planning Board. The Planning Board recommends that the town board refer consideration of the change-of-zone petition, 2013-05, of KPE 2 LLC, to the Department of Environment and Waterways for a recommendation on a secret determination before proceeding to any further action.
Is anybody present on behalf of the applicant regarding this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko, and I represent KPE 2 LLC. The application is for approximately 21 acres fronting on Old Northport Road and Lawrence Road, as the Planning Advisory Report indicates. There's also approximately 3.9 acres that is already zoned.
R21, and that's right along this bounded line, the western bounded line.
So the total is about 25 acres. The site is basically vacant. It is the subject of a litigation, which at the present time is pending before the Supreme Court. Obviously, we want to resolve that litigation and move forward. As the Planning Department indicated, this property, and most of the property around there, from the beginning of zoning in 1932 to the late '50s, was zoned residential. So this is nothing new, that we come before the Board and ask that light industrial property be rezoned to R21 Residential. It is appropriate. If you look at the report that Planning did, most of the area to the north is zoned R21. It's vacant. To the south, there's the Green Belt, and past that, Old Northport Road and residential. And to the west is also zoned R21, one-family homes residential. So again, we're not reinventing the wheel. It was always contemplated by the town pursuant to its master plan that this property and properties around it be used residentially. So that it is our client's position that we would like to move forward with the residential application, and I don't have to tell this Board that we need your recommendation to get to the town board. One of the problems, again, brought up in the PAR was or is the fact that buffers may be necessary around this property based upon, I guess specifically, the concern about property to the east, buffering the industrial-type uses that presently exist. And because of that buffering requirements, and we know they're necessary, we are looking at clustering the subdivision. It's very important. We like the idea of clustering. We like the idea of smaller lots, of course, meeting the yield of R21. I believe the Planning Department said or indicated one of their scenarios was R10 lots, 10,000-square-foot lots, closer together, allowing a buffer around the property. So we're not adverse to that. In fact, we think it is a good idea. One of the big issues, and we understand that too, is what about the environmental concerns? What's in the ground? What has been there for many, many years? We know it's been sand-mined, so at least on part of the property, we can tell what type of earth is there. But on a lot of it, it hasn't been sand-mined, so the concern that the Planning Department has is, and a legitimate one, what's beneath the ground? What are the environmental concerns, and what should we do about it? Well, again, I spoke to the principals of KPE, and both Mr. Underberg and Mr. Heinlein said, "If that's what the Board wants, let's do it now. Let's recommend -- we asked this Board to recommend to the town board," and I know you have to go through DEW, "and let's get it done. Let's do the impact statement." We're not adverse to doing it. I'm sure it's a concern of the neighbors. It's a concern of my clients. They don't want to build anything that may be detrimental to the people that live there. So we want to do this testing. We want to do it now. And I guess the most important thing that this Board can do is make a recommendation to the town board that we do the impact statement, and we get it done. The sooner we start, the sooner we can finish it. And then, I guess, we can get into, once that's behind us and once it's indicated in that report, what has to be done or what is not necessarily to be done. We can move on to the type of subdivision that's appropriate for the area. We think it's a cluster subdivision, but that's for another day, and of course, that's for this Board to decide. Right now, we're here before you for a change of zone, and the problem with the change of zone is what about the ground? What's there or what's not there? That question should be decided, and it should be -- the issues of that should be alleviated once and for all, so we can move forward. So again, my clients are in full accord with that, and the only thing they ask is that we do it now. So we don't waste months and months talking about what type of subdivision we should put in and what the yield is when we don't know what's going to come up in the impact statement. So we asked the Board, and we agree with the Planning Department, that that should be done very fast, as fast as possible. It's not often I agree with the Planning Department, but I think they're right, and more importantly, my clients think they're right. Both are very experienced men in developing, so I'm not just saying it. They told me that's what they wanted. So if you have any questions, I do have Barrett and Bonacci. We have an engineer, Gregory Brulee. We also have the two principals of the applicant here. I'm sorry. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I apologize.
Okay. What I think is, we're going to allow the members of the public who are here who wish to speak on this or ask any questions first, and then we'll go to the members of the Board. So starting off, just by show of hands, can anybody who wishes to be heard on this just raise their hand so we can determine how raise their hands, and we can determine how we're going to do this? Looks like we have about four, five, six people? About six. Okay. I would say that whoever wishes to be heard on this, please come up over to my right, the far right, make a line, and we'll come up to the microphone one at a time. Everybody else who wants to be heard, just line up behind whoever comes first, but off to the back, so there's only one person at the microphone at a time. And please give your name, your address, and if you have any relationship at all to the applicant or any organization, please let us know that.
My name's Tony Lutteiri, President, USA Recycling, and I want to thank you, Chairman, for allowing us to come up and members of the board. I don't want to oppose the KPE 2 rezoning application, but under the circumstances, I have to, and these are the reasons why. I support our prior Smithtown Planning Director Fred Meyer, our current Smithtown Planning Director Frank Derubias, and our current planning and directors staff on the buffer zone required prior to this application for other developers. On the south side of Old Northport Road, Klein and Eversol had to create a buffer zone and forfeit all of their development rights along Old Northport Road across from KPE 2, which was formerly the Carlson Site, and our facility, USA Recycling, in order to build homes. Years later, Charlie Mancini had to create an even larger buffer zone to develop a subdivision on the east side of Lawrence Road across from USA Recycling and KPE 2, formerly known as the Carlson Site. And then also Yoda Development had to create a buffer zone on Plymouth Boulevard and also the south side of Old Northport Road. USA Recycling is licensed by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, in part to recycle commodities from waste at its current location for the past 26 years. We perform a service for Long Island, recycling hundreds of millions of pounds of material that would have been incinerated or landfillled over the past 26 years. Approving a residential development within even 1,000 feet of our recycling facility will create a hardship for the new homeowners in the future. When the residents realize, day after day, that they are looking up at a 36-foot-tall waste commodity recycling transfer center, these residents are going to feel cheated by the town of Smithtown for allowing residential development in this area. Even with a 100-foot buff, even with a 1,000-foot buffer, sooner or later, someone is not going to like having USA Recycling for a neighbor, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year after year after year. Let's avoid these problems before they occur and continue with what our Smithtown planners have already learned in the past. This property that we built on started in 1985 with the guidance of Dr. Kopplman. Lee Kopplman helped us pick this site out, knowing that there would never be any residential developed on both sides of the area. Before KPE took over the property, I was between a sand-mining operation, a precast manufacturer, and a rubble dump. Now I'm located in an area where there's a dump for roadside drainage material and homes way up on the south side and to the east of us. So I'm just asking that, please don't grant this zone change.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Since he came from the right side of the room, we'll start off with this side. Anybody in this half of the audience wish to come up and be heard on this?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board, my name is Sean Lehman. I'm the president of the Kings Park Civic Association. Regarding the application before you-
Can you just give your address?
Sure. It's 27 Columbine Lane, Kings Park.
Thank you.
Regarding the application before you, in light of past practices on adjacent properties and the great likelihood of ground contamination, the Kings Park Civic Association also agrees that an environmental impact statement is required on this matter. This should also include testing to determine if any contamination from adjacent sites has the potential to leach onto the KPE site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from this half of the room wish to come up? Okay, then we'll go to this half. Anybody on this side of the room wish to come up? If you do, please just come up, give your name and address. If you're affiliated with any organization, please let us know that as well.
My name is Michelle Gary, representing the Old Northport Road/Lance Road Task Force.
Your address, please, for the record.
Thirty-two Old Northport Road, Kings Park, New York.
Okay.
Thank you, board. I have a couple of comments and questions pertaining to this application. One of the things that the task force would be concerned about is the amount of material required to either fill in the holes on this property. In the past, there's been dumping on this property that has severely impacted on the quality of life of the neighborhood with odors and airborne contaminants, I guess. So the people that live in the surrounding area would really be upset to see a project that where tractor-trailers were coming in and filling in the property. By the same token, we're also concerned about the amount of excavation that goes on on this property where material is leaving the site. I can't say that we're not in favor of a residential community. I mean, it certainly would be better than what's there now. Unfortunately, KPE 2 have not been good neighbors since they took ownership of this property, which is a shame, because we live in this neighborhood and we should, you know, be able to have a mutual respectful relationship, and that hasn't been the case in the last couple of years. The other thing I wanted to mention is the notices that went out to the residents that lived within a certain amount of feet to the property. There was a mistake on that, so I don't know if that impacted on what people thought where the property was located or where the change zone was going to be. It said that it was on the east side, and it's actually on the west side of Lawrence Road, so I don't know if that's a technicality that you might want to address for future notices as this goes on, to make sure that the location on the notices that go out are accurate. And that's really all I have to say. We're just concerned, as a group, as a civic group, and we just want to make sure that we preserve our neighborhood and the quality of life that we have there, and that this property would be improved. Certainly, that would be a bonus for us, but not if it's going to drag on forever and ever, which some people feel that this project, you know, may just be kind of a way to get more material off the site, so we're just concerned about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting us know about the issue with the notices. I believe Mrs. Derubias, our planning director, has already looked into that. This hearing is not going to be closed tonight, so to the extent that there is a problem with the notice, it can be re-noticed for the next time it's going to come back on. So we're not going to close the hearing tonight, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to be heard on this application this time? Nobody else? Any questions for Mr. Tramarko or any of the people he brought with him from the members of the board? All right, the planning department has recommended that we ask the town board to refer the matter to the Department of Environment and Waterways to make a recommendation to the town board regarding the SECRE determination, which relates to whether or not an environmental impact statement will be needed regarding this particular application. Our ultimate recommendation to the town board is just that. It's a recommendation. Ultimately, the town board will be the one who will determine whether or not the zone change will be granted. So it is the planning board's recommendation, the planning department's recommendation, that we have the town board, have Department of Environment and Waterways start off the process by making a recommendation on the SECRE issue, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then we will need a motion?
Not at this time.
Nope.
Not at this time. I think, since we're having the open hearing and another hearing, I think the board ought to wait until that matters.
Well, we'll just get a move that we sent it to the town board, but if we don't need to do that, then we don't need to do that.
There's a defective notice issued.
Right. It's still going to, it's going to be open no matter what. The hearing's going to be open no matter what. So what we'll do is we'll just adjourn for the evening-
That's correct.
And we'll let it go to the town board for them to-
No, I think, maybe I misspoke on this, Mr. Chairman. I think the board should make the final determination at the next meeting. We'll notice, we'll correct the notice-
Right.
Because that is, that is a very big defect.
Right.
It is the wrong property, so the hearing, before you take your actions, I would strongly recommend-
So what we'll do then, we won't do anything at this point.
That's right.
And you think it could be noticed for the next meeting?
I think there's sufficient time. If the notices went out this week, there'll be sufficient-
To correct it.
To correct it, yes.
Okay, so apparently, as the resident indicated, there is, there has been a defect with the notice, so what we're going to do is we're just going to adjourn the matter. The hearing will remain open, and to the extent it's necessary, it will be re-noticed for another day, most likely our next meeting, which will be the first week in May. And with that, nobody else wishes to be heard on this, then we will adjourn it to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a clarification. Under item one on your memo, there's a typographical error. It's a request from LI to R21, not to R10. Just wanted to clarify that.
That was in the beginning portion of the memo.
Oh, the memo, okay.
Yes.
Memo could record, reflect that the memo will be so corrected, or will be deemed so corrected. Okay, well, that's it. This is going to be adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the May 7 hearing-
Yes.
At the same time and place, for those who are interested.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part IV is the adoption of the minutes from the March 19 meeting.
All right, we need a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the March 19 meeting.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the March 19, 2014, Planning Board meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Those minutes are adopted.
Mr. Chairman, under Part V, Correspondence, is an item from Vincent Tramarko relating to two subdivision applications that have not yet been heard before the board, and you have that attached to your packet.
We don't need to address those now, do we?
No, not if you choose not to. It's just that-
The request is just to have these matters put on the agenda for the next available meeting.
Correct.
Okay. No problem with doing that, correct?
Well, in this case, the engineering department was objecting to some of the requirements here, and the applicant, I think, has a disagreement with the engineering department and would like the board to consider.
Okay, so it'll come up, but no problem with putting it on for the meeting. I'm not saying we're going to grant the application.
Oh, sure. If that's your direction, we can do that.
Okay. All right, well, that's that. I think we just need a motion to adjourn at this point.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Meeting is adjourned.